Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting for May 12. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our-
Can we have a roll call, Audra, please?
Mike Joseph?
Yeah.
Dale Macklin?
Yep.
Fran Hudson?
Here.
Doris LaBranche?
Here.
Adam Lent?
Here.
Lee Trahan?
Here.
Jeff West is absent this evening.
Through the chair.
Dale?
Jeff's not here, obviously. We were sending an email this afternoon, reasons why, and when would this-
That'll be brought up at public comment, if you're talking about Jeff.
And who made that decision?
I did.
On your own?
I did. As the Chair, it's my meeting, and I'm going to say we have it in public comment, and it was through Bill, Lee, the Town Manager, Audra, and myself.
Well, I think if we can get this over with with Jeff so quickly, we can-
I think we're going to get rid of that at public comment, but thank you. We'll move on. Do we have any disclosures of conflict-
Audra, would you note for the record what time it is that I'm leaving the meeting?
I will.
Are you removing yourself from your seat, or are you just leaving?
That is my decision, that I'm leaving this meeting, for the reasons why and my own reasons. And I don't have to answer your questions.
Have a good night. Do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest tonight? I see none. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. I did want to work with Audra on this one. We'd like to have a motion to amend the minutes of April 3. Can I have a vote to amend? It'll be an amendment to remove the wording, some wording on April 3.
Motion to accept the amended minutes?
Second.
And a vote?
So, I just want to make sure. We are, I received an email from Stephanie Shabats, am I?
Subak.
Subak, sorry, thank you. And she had some concerns about how I notated her comments at that meeting. And I'm going to change that to expressing her concerns regarding Steve Susi's employment contract. You're welcome.
So, I'm sorry, do we have a vote?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff is absent. Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale is absent. Anne Fran Hudson?
Yes.
So, motion to amend the April 3 minutes passes five to two.
And now, we are going to take a vote to actually accept the minutes?
Accept.
As amended?
Accept April 3's minutes as amended, yes.
I first? Thank you.
Second.
And a vote, please, Audra.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Anne Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion to pass April 3 minutes as amended passes five to two.
And then, can I have a motion to accept the, as a combination of the three, April 10, April 14, and April 28th, all as one vote?
So, move.
Second.
Can I have a vote, please?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale, oh, sorry. Anne Fran Hudson?
Yes.
So, motion to combine all the minutes of April 10, 14, and 28th passes five to two.
We'll move on to communications.
And can, oh, we just need one more vote on that?
On what?
To approve all of the minutes as presented for 10, 14, and 28.
Motion, I thought I just did that, but okay. Motion to accept-
Those to combine them.
Okay. To combine them, I get it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion to approve all vote, all minutes, the 10th, the 14th, and the 28th of April passes five to two.
Moving on to communications. The first one we have is a presentation to the Winslow Police Department on MLEAP accreditation.
Good evening, councilors and citizens of Winslow. I'd like to introduce first Jim Willis, who's in charge of the program. He's a retired chief of two cities.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. My name's Jim Willis. As you said, I retired a couple of years ago from Town of Mount Desert and the Town of Bar Harbor. Back, I guess I'd like to first tell you, I now work for a company called Dirigo Safety, which is out of Auburn, and we have a contract with the main chiefs of police association to administer their, we call it MLIP, that's the main law enforcement accreditation program. I was fortunate enough to have worked with several chiefs 10 or 15 years ago, where we developed MLIP, our program. And it was, it was an effort to offer chiefs a roadmap to providing the best professional services you could. At the time in Maine, we didn't really have anything like that. I can remember being a new chief, asking somebody where the playbook was, and there isn't one. So, some agencies, that would go awry, and the main chiefs of police associations would get hired to come in and, when something usually pretty terrible had happened, and try to help the community understand what had happened within their agency. And it felt pretty negative. I've been involved with a few of those. So, a group of us got together and said, "Let's try to do something that's a little better than that and help people stay out of those sorts of problems." That's what MLIP is. It's a group, it's a collection of around 165 standards that are divided up into 12 chapters. Everything from personnel files, use of force, pursuits, how you handle your evidence, just everything you could think of. And it takes agents, some agencies, up to five years to get what you need done to meet our accreditation standards. We keep it fairly affordable. It costs $750 a year to belong to MLIP. There is some software you have to buy to go along with it, but the idea is to keep it approachable. Our assessors, one of which is back here, Chief Lully, is the Augusta Police Chief. He is currently on the Board of Directors of the Main, of the Main Chiefs Association, and he's been an assessor for a number of years, and he was one of the assessors for your department here in Winslow. So, it started with Randy, what, a year or two ago, probably, for you?
A little over a year.
Yeah. So, we're talking completely revamping your policies and procedures, which there's dozens and dozens of. You have to train everyone into what they say. There are things, you have to look at your use of force and do analysis of those, and look at the chief and see if there's things we can do to tweak it to make things better. That's what they've been going on for more than a year, for sure. One of the things, when the program was built, one of the things we did was we went to the main municipal association's risk pool, which is where many communities within Maine buy their liability insurance. They were very impressed with the program, enough so that they provide us with financial support. We get legal reviews paid for by the main municipal risk pool. They're quite involved, and tomorrow, I'm going to send them an email that will get Winslow's Police Department a 15% discount on their liability insurance for becoming accredited. So, this is a big deal. And everyone in your agency is invested. The assessment process, a lot of it happens off-site because we're just reading your policies and procedures and making sure all of your folks have signed off on them, that they understand them and know them. And then, finally, there's an onsite portion of the assessment where I come with the assessors, and we require full access to everything in the police station. That's the chief's locked filing cabinets, the cruisers, and all of it. And we spend just a couple of hours here because they were ready. I've gone to these where we took five hours and left and had to come back another day. Here, we, literally, was a couple of hours because they did such a good job with it. We actually get in a cruiser with one of your patrol officers and go for a ride-along and do an interview with them that the chief isn't around for, just so we can get a good idea of how things are going. And I guess I would tell you that you have one of the more professional law enforcement agencies in Maine. And more importantly, this is not mandatory. Nobody has to do this. They chose to, to provide better services to all of you and to let you know they're running a good shop. Winslow PD is the 44th agency in Maine to become accredited, so there's still over 100 that have not done it yet, but this starts your three-year cycle. Chief Lully, anything else you'd like to say?
Again, thank you for having us. My name is Kevin Lully. I'm the chief of police in Augusta, and I am very privileged to be able to sit on the review board. I can share with you that, having done several of these in the past, that your department ranks amongst the highest. When we walked in, we were immediately met by staff that were, they're very pleasant, very professional, wanting to help, willing to help. And Chief Willis keyed on an important part. This is not a mandatory program to participate in. So, with all of the ongoing tasks and duties that are assigned to the police department on any given day, this was above and beyond the regular workload, and it was a lot of work. There's a lot of policy reviews that need to take place. There's a lot of transparency that you expose, and you really have to be willing to turn your underbelly to not only other law enforcement agencies, but to the community and your bosses as well, and let them know that we might not be doing it as well as we thought we were. And that was the case for my department when we became accredited. So, it's a great program. There's some great assets to that. And again, being only, you know, one of 44 agencies is certainly a great achievement. We thank you for having us here tonight. We thank you for allowing us to have the time with your police department. And I know that I'm already telling you something you already know, but they are an amazing group, and I know I'm very proud of them and proud to be part of this project with them.
Thank you.
Finally, to wrap it up, the assessors do a very formal report that I think you probably got in your pack at the council, and that probably is available if anybody wants to see what we're talking about. It is very well articulated in the report, and you could probably contact Chief McDade for that. So, I'm really here to present the chief with a plaque, recognizing that you're now accredited. So, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
And I just want to say real quick, I want to give a lot of credit to Deputy Chief Wang. He did 90% of the heavy lifting, and all the patrolmen and patrol women, that we were shorthanded, and like I said before, they have enough training as it is. And when I told them they had to do all this extra training, it was really putting a burden on them. But they all did it with smiles on their face, and they did a great job, and we pulled together and got it done, and I'm really proud of them. So, I just want to say thank you to them, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving on to boards and committee appointments. We have two openings on the planning board. Can I have a motion to appoint Justin Smith and reappoint Peter Newkirk to the planning board?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
And Adam Lent?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Justin Smith and reappoint Peter Newkirk to the planning board passes five to two.
Okay. We, can I also have a motion for the openings for the zoning board to appoint Joseph Markku? Again, that's a renewal. Can I have a motion, please?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Joseph Markku to the zoning board of appeals passes five to two.
Now, we move on to reports of committees and commissions, and we'll start with the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors, residents of Winslow. Town Manager's report for the month of April 2025. FY '26 proposed budget passed. The school budget is pending, the June referendum, and the referendum question will be on the ballot this year for voters to decide whether to continue with the referendum process or to keep the budget approval process with the town council. We've started a comprehensive evaluation of the emergency operations plans for the town of Winslow. Key focus areas include an assessment of existing operating or emergency plans, identifying gaps and opportunities for improvement, identifying key training that town personnel may need, depending on which position they fulfill. In the next year or two, we'll conduct ongoing professional development and key training for staff and personnel within the town, as well as conducting exercises to enhance communication, response effectiveness, and improve overall preparedness for the town of Winslow. The Winslow Police Department, as you just heard, many congratulations to the men and women of the Winslow Police Department on their huge accomplishment. Job well done there. Bid openings were accomplished in the month of April. We had the Lithgow Library, the surplus vehicles. We do have the GMC pickup truck that is back out for bid. That will be closing as it stands right now. I think I only have one bid in my office. Old Junior High demo project, we put out a public announcement for that. We're currently working with the lowest bid company, Envirovantage. Let's see. Town property 85 Benton Avenue, that property was successfully sold. Sewer fees and back taxes were garnered. The new owner is planning to renovate that property at 85 Benton Avenue. Fort Halifax, storm damage from last year. Still, really, nothing significant to report. We're doing meetings with FEMA every two weeks, but there's really nothing significant to report there, still waiting. ARPA, we submitted our final report. I say "we," it was really Tanya that worked through that, that report. The American Rescue Plan Act. We submitted our final report to the government and fully expended all funds with that program. The, my final note pertains to the 1806 Schoolhouse project. We got notified today. I actually had some updates. We had some meetings. We're moving forward with that project with regard to maintaining the historical aspect of the roofing for the Schoolhouse to renew the roof, and that fell through today. We were notified by the Maine Historical Preservation Commission that funds were canceled at the state level. So, we're working right now with the Winslow Preservation Committee, Ray Karen, Mike Hevner, to figure out how we're going to move forward with that, now that we kind of lost that grant funding.
What's the total amount they need, Steve?
I believe we were at a cost of, I think the grant was for $25,000. We currently have $15,000 sitting in the account specifically for the Schoolhouse. So, again, we're looking at how we're going to move forward. There's some different options. I talked with Amanda and Paul, Public Works Director, today. So, we're, we have another meeting to do and kind of decide where we're going to go from here, so. Other than any questions or concerns that-
Through the chair?
Yes.
On that truck, is there a minimum bid on that, on that truck?
No minimum bid.
No minimum?
No minimum.
We've only had one bid on it?
And I've had one bid, yeah, so far that I've seen.
And how long is it going to go for, or how long we keep it up?
I'd have to double-check the date.
I think it's the 15th.
15th of May. Yeah, 15th of May.
And on the Junior High, when does this demolition starting? I think, I don't know if that's been made public yet.
So, we met the company the other day, myself and the Public Works Director. We did a walk around the building with Envirovantage. Obviously, we're looking at school dates, so I believe the last day of school is June 17.
Student day is the 13th. The staff go the following Monday.
Right. Yeah, so.
Okay.
So, I think that would be the 16th.
Yeah. So, on or about the 17th is what we're looking for, a start date. And then, we looked at, you know, when does school start back up at the end of summer? We're looking at the 22nd of August, I believe, is new teacher orientation. So, we want to be mindful of those dates with all the construction equipment moving around. So, we've had those discussions. No specific date to start, certainly no specific date to finish. But as soon as those dates come out, we'll update the public through our social media platform and the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? It's just a-
Go ahead.
All it is, is how do we make out with the ground contamination over there?
Yeah. As far as ground contamination, the only thing that I've been made aware of with regard to ground contamination, there was some old tanks, excuse me, some old tanks on the left-hand side, as you're looking at the front of the Junior High. There's an old tank underneath that parking lot, and the word from state was that as long as that terrain is not disturbed, and those tanks are not disturbed, it's fine right there. But as far as contamination, yeah. Well, so, yeah, so there's two different sets of tanks, right? So, there's a tank underneath the parking lot on the left-hand side of the Junior High. There's also two tanks, as you're looking at the front of the Junior High, on the left rear, underneath the wooden building, there's two tanks under there. So, that wooden building needs to be pulled off, and then the tanks pulled out, so.
Through the chair can add to that, and also, those tanks are also emptied with oil, too.
That's correct.
They took the oil out of them.
Yeah, they're empty. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay. Do we have any other department heads that want to speak this evening? I don't see any. So, can I have a motion to accept and approve all of the reports?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the reports? And can we please have a vote, Audra?
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion to approve all reports passes five to two.
Next, we move on to table business. I see none. Old business. Order number 16025, authorizing the Town Manager to pay Envirovantage a total of up to $800,000 for the, from the undesignated fund balance account for the removal, demolition of the Junior High. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Order number 17-2025, authorizing the Town Manager to renew the contract between the town and the Waterville Area Humane Society for $17,737.46 annually, commencing July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026, per the attached agreement. And that is presented by the Town Manager. You have anything you want to say on that?
No. Just wanted to update the numbers on that contract. So, that is $17,734. Just for your knowledge, it went from $2.20, $1.87 per capita to $2.21 cents per capita. So, that's how they charge each town that they service. So, the contract went in 2024 from $15,008.62 to this year, $17,737.46. So, that's the increase in cost of doing business.
Can we have a motion to accept that order?
So, move.
Second.
I think we had a discussion. How about a vote, Audra?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution number 14-2025, confirming the appointment of Michael Murphy for the position of Fire Chief. Can I get a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
I will turn it over to our Town Manager.
With great confidence and pride that I stand before the Town Council today to recommend the promotion of interim Fire Chief Michael Murphy to the position of full-time career Fire Chief for the town of Winslow. Chief Murphy, can you stand up here, please? Chief Murphy began his career with the Winslow Fire Department in 2023 as a career lieutenant, immediately taking on critical responsibilities, including the supervision of EMS supply ordering and the daily operations and training of department crews. His leadership and foresight led to the streamlined EMS procurement processes, resulting in measurable cost savings and improved operational efficiency. Later that year, with the formation of the Winslow Public Safety Department, Lieutenant Murphy was appointed Deputy Fire Chief. In this role, he made significant contributions to enhancing physical responsibility, boosting departmental morale, and increasing overall operational readiness. His commitment to excellence was most notably demonstrated in 2024, when he effectively led the department through a series of severe storms and flooding events. And despite the challenges, Chief Murphy ensured uninterrupted emergency services and steadfast care for the citizens of Winslow during a time of great need. Based on his exemplary service, leadership, record, and strong endorsements, I unequivocally recommend and approve the promotion of interim Fire Chief Michael Murphy to full-time Fire Chief effective May 5, 2025, by the Town Council Resolution Number 14-2025. He has earned the trust of his colleagues, the respect of his peers, and the confidence of his community. Congratulations, Chief Murphy, and thank you for your continued service and commitment to the town of Winslow.
Thank you. Not really much for a speech. I continue to do what I've been doing, which is provide you the best service that we can as a group. We've got a lot of training still coming up, and we're just working to be the best department in the area. And that's always been my plan since I've started, and we're achieving that and getting closer and closer to that every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution Number 15-2025, authorization to approve donating revenues from snowmobile registrations to the Fort Halifax Snow Drifters Club. Do I have a motion?
So, move. I'll second.
Town Manager, have anything you want to speak on, on that, or?
No. I talked with Tanya this morning, got the update. It's the same, same thing we've done from year to year, so.
And can we have a vote, please?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Moving on to Resolution Number 16-2025, the Town Council has established a charter review committee and has outlined specific guidelines for its operation. The Town Council hereby approves the attached guidelines for the committee's adherence. Do I have a motion to accept them?
So, move.
Second.
The discussion, I would start by saying that this was way back we started this, this committee, in hopes of just bringing- in hopes of just bringing the current charter, if there's any wording that needs to be changed or, um, that needs to either go to referendum or slight changes. But either way, it kind of sat for a long time. Um, so hopefully, the guidelines being accepted now, it'll move into the hands of the people that are actually on the committee. Um, Audra, was you able to find one more person to fill the spot of Steve's?
I have three people that have said they want to be on the committee. It will be on next, um, agenda to fill it.
Okay, okay. So that's where we are with that. So hopefully, it'll be started up real soon, so they can finally follow through with the original intent of having the committee. So do we have any other discussion? And can I get a motion?
We just need to vote for that one.
I'm sorry, can we vote? I'm sorry.
Uh, Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with two.
Moving on to resolution number seventeen dash two zero two five, authorization for the town clerk slash register of voters to notify the voters of this municipality of a budget validation referendum election for the Winslow Public Schools to be held on Tuesday, June ten, two thousand twenty-five. This is presented, uh, well, can I get a first?
Set a move.
And any discussion? And can we get a vote?
Uh, Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranch?
Yes.
And Adam Lent?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Audra, do you want to explain what that is, or are you all good?
Um, yeah, no, I can do that. So the town council agrees on and approves the budget as in a whole, as the town and the school. And the state requires a referendum election for the school portion of the budget. Um, so we will hold that election on June tenth at the VFW. To approve or deny that portion of the budget this year, um, there are two questions. One, are you in favor of approving the budget? And number two, um, do you wish to continue the budget validation referendum process for the, or letting the town council do with that, um, approval for the next three years? So, um, we are waiting on one more signature from the school board, and then all of our number sheets will be ready, and you can come pick up an absentee ballot, uh, anytime between nine and five, Monday through Thursday.
Excellent, thank you, Audra.
You're welcome.
Now, we're going to move on to discussion items, and the first one is emergency preparedness by our town manager.
Through the chair, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to bring forth, uh, some more information as we continue to work on, uh, emergency preparedness within the town of Winslow. So I've crafted up a draft, uh, plan or, or program to put forth to the council in the future. So I just wanted to bring this forth as a discussion item. Uh, and it's, it's forming, um, an emergency planning group, or the Winslow Emergency Planning Group, the WEPG. Um, it consists of seven positions, the town manager, the fire chief, the police chief, the public works director, uh, code enforcement officer, and a, um, the town financial administrator, uh, at this point, Sherry, and then a school district official, whether it's the superintendent or one of the building administrators, um, to, to keep the school involved, uh, with regard to emergency planning. Uh, the mission of the Winslow Emergency Planning Group is to protect lives, property, essential services, and critical infrastructure, and ensure the town is ready to respond and to recover from any emergency. The goal is to enhance the safety, resilience, and preparedness of the town of Winslow through coordinated planning, communication, and collaboration among all municipal departments. Uh, this group fosters a unified approach to emergency management and prioritizes the protection of life, property, and critical infrastructure while maintaining essential services during a crisis. So that's the path and the direction that I'm trying to lead the town with regard to emergency preparedness. So I don't know if you guys had any comments or concerns?
Is this the first time this has come up for Winslow? Or did we have something like this?
So I, I conducted an initial, uh, search, uh, and, and review of emergency operations plans within the town of Winslow. The only thing that I've found thus far is a report, uh, essentially an after-action's report for a winter storm in two thousand fifteen. And then there's a standing plan, emergency operations plan for the town of Winslow that I found in a binder that's dated two thousand seven. Um, so I've been in contact with, uh, former town manager, Mike Hevener. Um, and so we're going to move forward with updating those plans. By charter, the fire chief is, uh, the Winslow Emergency Management Director. Uh, so with that, I've had discussions with chief. The minute I broached the topic with him, he was in my office, grabbed the binder, made photocopies of everything. Um, the, the police department, with their recent certification, uh, their emergency plans contained within the police department are updated. We, we garnered a copy of that, so that's in that binder. Um, so we're just trying to, I have reached out to the superintendent. Uh, so we've, we've got some discussions going there, and they're always invited to attend any meetings moving forward to ensure the, the, the school system is within, uh, those, those planning, uh, meetings, so. Um, so that's, uh, kind of the direction we're moving in. Um, it looks like it's an, it's an older plan. Uh, sometimes plans like that end up on a shelf and, and, uh, you know, don't get updated as often as they should. But with the professional team that we have on board, we're going to move forward and, and get the town updated and.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep, yes, sir.
Does this, does, would this, this is for any emergency, right? Flooding?
This is all hazards, whether it's, uh.
Shooting type thing, all of it?
Absolutely, either man-made or natural. Yes, ma'am.
Very interesting.
Any other questions? That's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have food sovereignty ordinance, Kate Newkirk, Winslow Agricultural Commission?
Yes. Yeah, I'm Kate Newkirk. I'm the chair of the Winslow Ag Commission. And we'd like to present to you the, uh, request for a, that Winslow become a town that supports the, that supports food sovereignty. And for those of you that don't know what food sovereignty is, it's basically, um, a law that was passed in twenty twenty?
Around that thing.
Oh, and this is Heather Thorne. She's one of our ag commissioners, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Go ahead.
But it's basically, uh, that the residents, um, it was in twenty twenty, the state passed it. And towns have basically supported, you know, basically your vote is a support for the residents in the town for, for food sovereignty, which means if you are selling, if you bake bread in your home kitchen, now you bake things a lot in your home kitchen. Now, she happens to be licensed.
Kate, can I have you make sure you're speaking into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, the, you have to have a license to do anything as far as processing your crops and that kind of thing. The food sovereignty law allows you to, to not have to license your facility if you are only selling to people at your farm gate. Okay, so, um, it's including, you know, so I didn't, you can, you can sell it from your farm gate to the end user. Okay, does not mean you can sell it at farmer's markets. It's, it's not a lot, you can't sell it. Farmer's markets have to be insured and that, that kind of thing. Um, there's currently, let me see, I printed out some of these. Um, in the county of Kennebec, thirteen towns are currently members, have joined on to the food sovereignty ordinance.
Including all of the surrounding towns around us.
Including all the surrounding towns around us, including Fairfield and Somerset. Somerset also has thirteen towns. Knox County has six, Waldo County has eight, Lincoln County has two, Sagatahock has two, and Huma Missin, Somerset has thirteen. So there's a lot of support for this locally, and, um, I don't, I don't know if anybody has any questions. The one thing it does require licensing for is meat and meat products, chicken and chicken products. You still have to be licensed to do those, so that does not include those.
Like, yep, you would still, you would still need like a, um, the state retail license to sell meat, pork, chicken, that kind of thing, so you'd still have to be licensed for the state, so. But this is really for, like, you know, baked goods. Certain things can be done, like with a home kitchen license, some can, but some things would be done with a commercial kitchen license. Um, with this, it's really just taking the state out of it. Um, and the state has given the towns the option to accept this ordinance, and it's really just supporting local residents getting food from local residents and trying to keep our local foods local.
Is this, through the chair, is this also include fruits and vegetables and whatever?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah. Veggies, veggies, you, if it's a, say you pick a zucchini out of your garden, you can sell veggies anyway. Um, if you process it, you can't sell chopped, you can't sell cooked, it would have to be. But with this, you could, you could go pick apples, make apple pie, and sell it if you wanted to. Um.
So it's anything you cook?
Anything processed.
Yeah.
Yeah, processing is, it's a whole different.
Yep.
And it, there's all kinds of other things.
And I know, um, like liability is a big question, like what if someone gets sick? It's really up to the consumer who they choose to purchase from. Um, the town is not liable. It's really on the person who's purchasing and the person who's selling.
If somebody sold something bad, who would they take that problem to? If somebody got sick?
It's up to the, it's up to the customer to, well, it's.
It goes back to the person who sold it.
Yeah.
So did they report that, though, to the state or to the town, or?
Hmm, I don't think there's a requirement to do that.
I don't think there is either.
No, you might get a complaint about.
Well, if someone got food poisoning, say, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the biggest thing would be, um, this came up because of the fact that they were requiring small dairies that, you know, had a couple cows that would sell raw milk to the, to their neighbors. Um, and, you know, the, they pushed through the, the fact that, you know, if, if you're, it's up to you as a customer to be comfortable with buying such product. And it's also up to the vendor to also make sure that their product is, you know. So it's, it's on, it's on both sides, but it's a one-on-one.
So it'd be a personal lawsuit back and forth between the consumer and the.
I would assume it would be, yes.
Seller, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Through the chair, I have some questions. I'm familiar with health engineering and, um, the health department licensing eating establishments, mobile units, that sort of thing. I've worked in the health engineering field. I'm also familiar with the Department of Agriculture and the type of licensing they offer for certain, um, food preps. Um, would your kitchen still be licensed? Are you still going to follow the main food code? And, um, what happens if there's, um, a mass?
It would be in the vendor's interest to, to follow the food code.
Yeah, this would be for any resident in Winslow can, it's not just like for me, but, um.
You're already licensed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm already licensed, so I, but with my license, under my license, I can only sell certain items. But if the town of Winslow is food sovereign, then it will be able to, I'll be able to expand what I can sell without getting a commercial license.
So you do packaged foods or, um, hot, hot food items?
Staked items and.
And it's all wrapped, sealed?
Yep.
Okay. And you're, um.
This is for like farm stands, um, yeah. If, you know, if, there's a lot of people that do, um, you know, on Facebook, they'll say, okay, I'm doing pre-orders for cookies for Valentine's Day or whatever holiday it is, and that, that, it's selling items directly to a consumer. That way, the consumer can ask the vendor, what are your ingredients in this? How is it made? You know, that kind of thing. If it's not, if it's, there's a middle person or it's not being sold directly to the consumer, you know? Yeah, there's, I mean, with a licensing, you have to be labeled and this and that, all the ingredients. But because you're direct to the consumer, you can explain anything to the consumer. That's why the consumer has to be the end person.
And who inspects your kitchen?
The state. The state of Maine.
Uh, Department of Agriculture or Health Engineering?
Isn't the Department, isn't Health Engineering under the Department of Agriculture?
No, Health Engineering's under Maine CDC.
Okay, well, as far as the food sovereign goes, there's, there's, um, there's no kitchen licensing.
You wouldn't have to have the kitchen license for this food sovereignty.
Right.
She's already licensed by the state.
And, right, and this is not just for me. This is for everyone in this, in the town.
Yeah.
So.
Steve, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I think you clarified it. I, I was just going to ask, so, or clarify, I guess. So the, the buyer or somebody that stops at a farm stand, they assume the risk when they buy that food. There's nothing that guarantees that if they get sick, that they're going to be made whole financially through some sort of a lawsuit. They, they assume that.
The state law prevents.
Right, so they assume that risk when they go live.
They assume that, they assume that risk.
And when you said processing, I'm assuming, uh, canning is involved in that, so you can't sell canned goods.
Okay, yep.
Right.
You can, is that what you said?
Oh, you can?
Yes, yep. Because currently, currently, you'd have to, um, say I want to sell.
Processed food.
Yep, so currently, you, um, in the town of Winslow, you would need to have, you have, say I want to make dilly beans and sell dilly beans, you need to, you know, write the whole process out. You take one jar that you've made, send it to Humane, they test it for the pH and everything like that. Um, and then they pass it or fail it, but, yes, so bypass that.
Can, may I ask, so if the food sovereignty ordinance goes through, you wouldn't need to do that to sell your dilly beans?
Correct.
So, thank you.
Are you looking for us to put an ordinance through for you, is that what you?
Yes, yep, which we have the template and everything already.
Yeah, you have the template in your, in your pack.
So it's really just to increase the access to local food. Um, Winslow is our sign. Whenever I make kids in landscaping, it says, supporting farms or, you know.
Farm-friendly community.
Thank you, yes. So we just figure that this is very, you know, we're trying to keep locally grown food or made food local, and.
I'd like, I'd like everybody to remember that farming is a business.
Of course.
Okay, and it's one of the biggest businesses in the state. You know, so the little guys are just as important as the big guys.
Yep.
And this allows that local touch to be supported.
Good, we're good, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Next, we move on to the safety committee. Lee, that's your baby.
Thank you. Um, I was, I was approached a couple of years ago by a resident in, well, living in Halifax Heights. It's a fairly new subdivision located off Whipple Street. And they had wanted to know why this subdivision had gone in, um, even though the town had, they, the original person that constructed it um, had to, um, meet the standards to have the town take over the roads, which I'm, I'm sure is a pretty lengthy process to make sure all the requirements are met. Um, but the resident was curious why they go and put in all the roads, but there isn't any streetlights for safety reasons for people that walk or anything like that. And, and, uh, with Fran, this is her district, um, she helped gather some information as well that there were, um, kind of an informal, uh, knocking door to door for people wanting to, um, express their opinion on how they felt regarding the lighting, streetlights in that area. And with, uh, like you said, with Fran's help, um, there are, there are basically twenty-five lots in that. And with, like I said, with Fran's help, there are basically 25 lots in that subdivision. And there's a few of them that even have double lots. So after tallying them up, there were a total of 15 residents that live in that subdivision that said yes. But also there's three vacant lots currently, and some of those residents also have double lots that said yes. And that we know of right now, there's only been one person that has said no to putting any streetlights in. And I know this has kind of been going on for a while now, but that was kind of the thing I was going after earlier, a couple months ago, about trying to establish some sort of guidelines, especially after we had a couple residents ask for streetlights that we ended up approving. And, but it still was kind of, I felt that it was still kind of left up in the air as far as any kind of criteria or anything like that. So, at this point, we're doing what we can to help out as many residents as we can with any kind of safety request that comes before us. And I do know that we, Fran had asked Chief Murphy to go out there and take a look and give us his opinion on the situation.
I think he'll speak if you'd like. Chief Murphy?
Chief Murphy?
Through the chair. So I got asked, we had started looking into this a couple of months ago on the, like, the Town Safety Committee. We did a little research, and we couldn't find anything that was just for the town itself. Every time I would search something, unless you found something so far, it would refer back to like the Employee Safety Committee of the town like we already have. But, I mean, this is, this is basically pretty much what it is. If we, if an employee sees something safety-wise, they just report it. So why not have them, like, you know, if somebody complains, come to us and then we'll take a look at it. So I ended up driving by Saturday night about 9:30. The loop is extremely dark. If you're walking outside, if you don't have bright clothes on, it's dark. There are no streetlights, so if anybody in your neighborhood noticed a dark-colored SUV kind of shutting its lights off and somebody just mayandering around your street, that was me. I was waiting on the radio to see if somebody was going to be out there for a prowler, but it was just me. But I'm not a police officer, it's just, like I said, you know, I didn't, it's dark enough that if you really wanted to do something devious, you could do it, and if they didn't have cameras, you could just walk away or get in your car and drive away. So, yeah, in my opinion, it's unsafe for anybody, whether if they walk in their dog or, you know, even at the end of the driveway, it's, if you don't have motion lights, it is what you'd expect in a rural area or in town, it's pretty dark.
Chief, question then. Aside from the safety of the individuals, how about the safety and being able to have any first responder crews go out there and try to find...
So, we've had this discussion, and we joked about it at first until I went and looked at it, I'll be honest with you. We have the floodlights on our truck that can be turned on right in the cab. We can light that neighborhood up pretty good to find a street, you know, find your house number. So that isn't the issue, it would be more the issue of you guys walking around, or we can light up the area that we need to be in quite well. We have light tower on the engine, we have floodlights and spotlights on all the apparatus, but it's more of if you're just a regular individual and something happens, it's not going to be hard for us to find you, it's just for your safety is what I was asked for as far as walking at night on that street, because there is no sidewalks. It's street to grass on both sides.
Through the chair. So what is it going to take to get some streetlights up there for safety?
I think it would take a consensus for us to do that.
Right, I'm guessing it would be up to you, Public Works, Town Manager, I'm guessing there's probably costs involved with putting a light up.
It's up to the council's decision.
Right.
After you got the recommendation from you that it is in fact a safety issue...
Right.
Then the council would then act on it.
Right.
How many lights are you recommending? I've been on that street, it's dark.
I would say at least two. I mean, you don't have to go extravagant and go every other pole, but maybe one on each corner? I mean, it's a good-sized loop.
I think two is good, too.
So if you put one on each corner, plus what you turn off in Whipple, you've got the lights somewhat right there, but if you had two on each end, yeah, dawn on the corners, because there's poles on each corner. Go ahead. Okay.
No, she's going to have to come up to speak, and we can do that.
Okay. I'll stop.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Being in the corner, I've been there for five years, I've never felt unsafe. But that corner that you speak of putting a light in would be right over my house. And every night when I go outside, the first thing I do is look up at the sky to see the stars. It feels like you're in the country although you're in town. That's been a unique benefit for us ever since we've been there. But if you stick a corner light right there over my house, for me, that's gone. I've never felt unsafe. My garage, and you said, motion lights. My house has motion lights.
Yep, there's a few that have.
As soon as I, as soon as you drive down my house, you will go by, my motion lights light up my driveway. I have all kinds of lights outside that are the solar energy type lights. In fact, there's quite a few neighbors that do have those solar energy kind of lights. That seems to light up as much as I think we need for our own safety, but we're the ones that live in the corner. We don't want the lights. Janet next door, you said one person, that's not true. Lena was next door to me, she didn't want them. I know she's moved out and that's going to be an empty house. Janet next door to me, she doesn't want the lights. So it's not this, everybody wants them except one person. I'm sure you're speaking about me because I've been against them before. There are other disadvantages to throwing lights in that corner. It draws in brown-tailed moths, it draws in bugs. Suddenly, not only do I have to tolerate a light that I can't see my stars anymore, and you're lighting up my yards all around, my house is lit up now at night through my windows, I have no more darkness. You're bringing brown-tailed moths, moths and bugs to fly around my home. And for me, I don't want a light in my corner. If you want to throw it down the street in front of Paul, in the middle, that's fine and dandy, you want to throw it on the other side, in the middle where Jeff wants it, that's fine. But our street has a nice, unique feel to it. I want to be able to go outside, I want to be able to look at the sky and see the stars, not a streetlight. So, you know, I know that you guys are going to all vote, but you're not the ones living in my house in the corner where they want to place that light. I've said my piece.
Ma'am, can I...
Hopefully it doesn't happen, because it would be very disappointing to live there five years and have the sky to look at every night. And when you see the northern lights coming through, I'm not going to see those things anymore if you throw a light over my house.
Could I get your name, please?
Annette Jollicar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Paul Giroux, I live at 4 Hayden Street, and we're talking about the lights, and we have many, I'm representing most of the people in the park, and most of them got about 18 people that want lights. And I'd like to also suggest that they probably put a light on each street, which would be three.
I'm sorry, you said you lived there, right?
Yes, that's at Halifax Heights. And I talked with the majority of the people, and I'm representing most of the people that are there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Stephanie Subak, Goodrich Lane, obviously I don't live at the location being discussed, but I picked up on something, I want to ask some questions to make sure we understand the financial considerations and potential legal considerations. I heard something that the town took over that road. Was it a private road? Is it private property? Is there an HOA? Does that mean the town's responsible for the property? I just have some concerns from a legal standpoint and a financial standpoint. Does any, can anyone answer, is it truly a private road, private property, that the town offered to take over the road maintenance, or?
I know they plow there and they do trash removal there, and I don't think we'd be doing it for nothing.
No, but I heard the term that the town took over maintenance. I'm sorry, I just...
Through the chair, sorry. Who stated that?
I heard that...
I did.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, just to give a little information, I do know the process of a subdivision. I know that, I wish Paul was here to give us a little info on that, but from my understanding, that if they build a subdivision and the road going in, coming out, whatever, as long as it meets the criteria of the standards for an in-town road, once it meets that criteria, then the private owner presents it to the town to be taken over and plowed and...
Service to maintain.
And town maintained.
I just couldn't tell based on your comments or whether there was an HOA in place or not for that neighborhood, because that may put a different spin on it.
Through the chair.
No, a lot of these places here, when they start the subdivisions, as Lee was saying, is when they start the roads in there and they want to give it to the town, I should say, or will it to the town, is that they have to meet certain criterias with culverts, the runoff on the roads, they have to pave the road, and it has to be up to the standards before it's given to the town, so the town takes care of it. That's how it normally is.
So the other question, assuming there's no HOA in place, I got that answer.
Yeah.
Are there existing, I'll say, covenants and so forth tied to that subdivision that are in people's contracts when they bought property in that, that still have to be adhered to or maintained?
I believe that was from one person. I'm not sure what his name was, I think I know who he is, but as far as the covenants, the roads are separate from whatever they sold the property. In other words, when he developed that thing, then he had an agreement with the town to make sure that he would take, put his money into the roads, so that way the town would take over that. But, yeah, he bought that property, he developed that property, and of course, he actually built, had those roads built before he did give it to the town. So I don't think there's any other legal ties that we have that we have to be concerned with. In fact, we could check it with Lee, our attorney as well.
I'd, thank you, sir. I'd recommend checking it only because we lived in Hampden. I know it's a different county, it's a different town and everything else, there was no HOA, it was a subdivision called Old Field Estates. My house is for sale if anyone's interested up there. But there were still covenants in place that got carried into different real estate contracts when people actually bought the homes, there was never an HOA, but there were still some things that had to, had to be some guidelines in that, kind of preserving what the original intent of the subdivision was. So I'd recommend we check that and then to make sure that that's, this is actually even legally allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Giroux, once again, thank you so much for seeing me tonight. Now, I want to ask the fire chief a question here, if I can.
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to know how far the nearest hydrant is from any, from either Elizabeth Street or Hayden.
So, we were actually, me and Code were discussing that. Oh, yeah. So Code and I were discussing that, and we ended up running a bunch of calls before I got to check that on the hydrant map, to see how far, you know, what is what. From what I understand, and again, Paul's not here, I was involved in one other development process, and they had to have fire hydrants, so many...
So many feet?
So many feet. That included the streetlights and everything else. So, without digging into how this was given to the town or what the process was, this should have been in the planning board paperwork, would be my guess. From little, little I understand, because like I said, mine was to see how far hydrants were at a development, often Rodrick wrote, that we had somebody put one in.
Through the chair, so that particular development was done about five years ago? That development made five years ago?
Yeah.
It was? So I guess we can check on that and see what that, what it said on the planning board, what we had to have over there, right?
That, like I said, Paul's not here, but that would be my consensus, is there had to be...
Who are you?
Yeah, I know. The other Paul. Because like I said, it'll have, it should have lights, you know, if they allowed sidewalks. Like I said, I'm, this is a guess, but the ones that I've seen have this, it's either sidewalks, lights, hydrants, and whatnot. But again, you'd have to talk to Public Works Director and look at the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got it.
Well, I think we're going to have to revisit this. I mean, I think we can start with Bill Lee. Just ask Bill Lee, who owns the land? Did the town do it?
Doug Dixon.
Doug Dixon.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't see your hand.
My name's Dave Rodrick, I live in Halifax Heights. Just to answer a few questions right off the bat, Doug Dixon does own the land, all the property is rented. Everybody buys their homes and brings them in. When somebody decides they want to leave, Doug Dixon has first option on buying the place. If he doesn't want it, then it's sold out on the market. But anyways, I kind of understand the Jollicar's point. They like what they like, they've had it, I get that. For an example, I think it was just about a week ago now, we had a gentleman down there that ended up severing some fingers. If there's anything fortunate to an event like that, it was during the day, there was a neighbor outside, heard him screaming. If that had been in the middle of the night, he'd passed out. What would have happened then? Nobody would have seen him, nobody would have been able to see him. I think the idea of putting a streetlight halfway down on Hayden and halfway down on Elizabeth would be a good start. But I'd also like to expand upon this, because almost every other street in town in Winslow has curbs and a sidewalk. And as far as the chief's issue of people getting hit while they're walking down there would be relieved by having a proper sidewalk in there. I know it's money and the times are tight, but they've, it's something that should be warranted, because as he stated, it's street to grass. I've lost two feet of my front lawn from plowing because they plow all the salt and sand onto my lawn. You've had Public Works down there repairing people's lawns over the last couple of weeks because of the fact that they plowed up going around corners, and every year we get the, well, it's a brand-new driver, and it probably is, but, I mean, we're losing lawn down there because of the fact that the plowing is killing it. And also the fact that one storm, they'll plow, and I got to go six feet out into the road to bust through to get out of my driveway, and then the next storm, they're up on my lawn, so... But as far as the lights, my suggestion would be, start out with the two on either side and see where it goes from there. If the chief then drives down through and says, yeah, this is sufficient, great. If it's not, well, then maybe we'll have to relook it and put another one down on the Seager Brook side.
How many houses in there?
There are roughly 22, I think.
Thank you.
No kids, it's a 55-plus park. Grandkids, but no kids. What's that?
School bus goes through there?
Yes.
Pretty fast.
Every day.
Not mine.
At a high rate of speed, but anyways, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're definitely going to have to, anybody else? Before I, anybody else? Nope. Okay, so we'll have to revisit this at some point, probably sooner than later. They've been waiting, as Lee said, a few years. So maybe we can, what would we have to do once we figured out if it was okay and legal, which I can't imagine it's not, but do you make it as an order?
I think it was an order for the one out by Bushy's on Benton Avenue.
Right. And there was one we just did a few months ago. The lady stood up and spoke and boom, she got her light.
Augusta Road, there was one.
I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
It's just a different suggestion, but is it possible instead of lights up high on the high poles, if you have just lamp posts, shorter lamp posts like on Main Street, USA? You know, when you go down Main Street, you just have the shorter light posts?
I don't think that gives us much, well, I don't know.
What, what light do you need though? Me, why do you need the light up high?
I guess my question would be, why do we have streetlights, period? I guess, why do they put streetlights on, on residential streets? I guess that's the only way I keep trying to think of it.
I'm just trying to find a solution that wouldn't ruin that whole atmosphere that.
Well, you just said though, if it's in the middle, you'd be okay with that.
If, if it wasn't on top of my house.
Right.
And near my house, I would be just fine. I'd have to live with that. I mean, that's, it wouldn't be the same, but I still kind of wonder if you did just the lamp posts, shorter lamp posts. Is that something that's even possible?
Everything would have to be underground. Probably be a different, whole different quality.
More expensive?
Yeah.
I guess that would.
Yeah, a lot more expensive.
It's all underground.
All right. Well, that's another call.
You can also get lights that only light downwards, but.
Okay. I got to have them over here. If you're going to speak, you're going to have to come up because we can't hear, okay? We can't hear you guys when you speak.
What, what I said was that, that you can, there's, a lot of neighborhoods are moving to lights that only focus downwards, not focus globally around. And that, that reduces, that allows night skies to, to show and that kind of thing. But it's just a suggestion and it's probably not, you know, and, and again, it's going to be where you want to put it and how, how you want to do it, but there's, there's movements in other places to keep that night sky a night sky.
Sure.
And these, these lights are designed to work with that.
Thank you. Okay, everybody finished? That ends public comment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, we have, we have public comments.
I'm sorry? Oh, you have a public comment?
Well, that was in regards to the safety committee. So now we still have public comment to go. But I do have something, public comment to read. Let me read that now.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. This is from Jeff West. I am sending this correspondence to inform you that I am resigning from the Winslow Town Council effective 6:30 PM, May 12, 2025. The reasons are far-reaching and are solely based on actions and inactions of certain councilors, including the town chairperson. I would also like to urge the citizens of the town to vote in favor of the school budget. Thank you, Jeff West.
Any other public comments? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kyle Price at 147 Clinton Avenue. And I'd just like to respond to the work that it sounds like our town manager is doing to bring that emergency plan together with those three prongs, those three stool legs of the police, fire and the school. I can assure you that you're probably going to find a pretty comprehensive school emergency plan once you get your hands on that. I was very actively involved in that when I was a school administrator. I was trained to be an ALICE trainer. ALICE is a certain program to respond to active shooters. Unfortunately, that training that I went to with the school resource officer occurred in December of 2019. And just as we were starting to roll out plans on how we would train our staff in that response plan, obviously got scuttled by the March 13, 2020 closing of school for the rest of that school year. But I know that the elements of that plan, even though we didn't train the way that we wanted to, have gone into the development of, or the continuous evolution. This school response plan has been going on for as long as I've been there. And everybody has a role. The school bus drivers have a role. The, the fire and, and police have a role. And so I'm, thank you for bringing that together and moving that in a direction because I think one of the things that is needed is that collaboration piece. Not that it wasn't there, but more discussions around what that would look like will be very effective. So thank, thank you.
Excuse me, Kyle. I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Is that something you want to offer, the, the information that you've learned back then with probably with Mike as far as the emergency and with, with Steve?
Well, I'm confident that our superintendent, Mr. Tibbitot, has that. I haven't seen the most recent version of those plans.
It has, okay.
It goes back, Kevin Mischu and I, particularly as principals of the junior high and high school, the time when Kevin Mischu was principal at the high school, the second Kevin Mischu.
Right.
Kevin B., I think it is, not Kevin A. Anyway, we, we actually drafted the, the most, I would call up-to-date plan at that time and it was continuously updated. You know, we would roll in the names of people that might have replaced councilors, for example. I mean, there is a crisis response team that gets together to figure out what, you know, as much as possible, what we, we want to do. That plan was all built on a program called I Love You Guys, which dates back to 80s, 90s Colorado school shootings, but the, one of the parents of one of the children that died in that Colorado, not the one that we hear so much about. There were some other school shootings in Colorado, but he says, there's got to be something that we do. And he developed this I Love You Guys and it was because that was the last text message he got from his 16-year-old daughter before she perished in that event. But it provided flexibility. It gave you a structure, but it's almost impossible to train for every given scenario. So there were four tenants of that, of what you would do if you had to stay in place. So it was lockout. Lockout, I believe is still currently being used, would be, for example, at the elementary school, you've got the bank right across the street. Bank robbery takes place. We get a notification that there's a lockout, which just means you're locking, all of our doors are locked anyway, but you're going to go check to make sure that they're secure. And it's basic, and if you're outside, you come in. Basically, it's you resume normal procedures, procedures, but keep an active eye as to what's going on around you and stay alert to what's going on. Lockdown is if you actually have an event that's going on inside the building and there's a procedure for that. Evacuate is another term that's used, which, which would include fire, but it would also to be the decision to get away. And that's more of what ALICE is based on. ALICE is based on get the heck out if you've know, if you can. If you know that there's something going on, if you can't get out, prepare yourself to counter. Don't, don't just be lame sitting ducks underneath a table over in the corner somewhere. Have yourself ready so when that door gets pried open, if it gets opened, because we have a procedure where all those doors are locked in the school, you're ready to do something, you know? I'm going to tell you, we used to tell our teachers, if you are a baseball, softball or field hockey player, go get your old stick and bat and have it in the corner of your, of your door, right? And you don't open the door for anybody. The only people that are coming through that door are the people that have the proper access and that would be our fire and police. I'm not going through that door. If somebody's got something, you know, forcing me through, I'm sorry, not happening when I was principal. But anyway, I, I think you're going to find a comprehensive plan. I think it's going to be great to bring that all together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you.
I have to agree with the young lady over there. One of our biggest enjoyments where we live on the outskirts is sitting out back and looking at the stars and looking for anything else that might be up there.
I see no more public comments. Public comment has ended and now I think we need a motion to adjourn.
Settle over.
Show of hands.